Good morning, everyone. I'm going to call to order the Transportation and Infrastructure Subcommittee. I'm joined by Councilwoman Pastor Gallego. I believe Councilwoman Gates will be here soon. Okay. Item on is the approval of the June 9 meeting minutes. Any changes, discussion, motions?
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve at the second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item three is for information only. Does anyone have any questions for staff? Okay, hearing none. Item four, I've had a request. Maria, could you come up and talk to us about Title VI?
I come with a team of folks.
Excellent. And I had asked for just a few questions on the Title VI program, including District Eight is a very diverse population, and we had a refugee town hall where we had many individuals who said they had significant interest in the, particularly on the bus service and the routes in the area around the airport, and they weren't sure how to get involved. And then I noticed in this plan, which talks about how we work with the limited English population, that some of the agencies that serve that community had requested publications in languages such as Arabic, and I just wanted to see if that was something we were able to help with. And then it said that the website will translate into languages, but it seemed like no one had access to some of those languages that are pretty commonly spoken in District Eight, and so I don't know if they just weren't aware that you could get the website in Somali and translate it, since we had thousands of folks who ride the bus and are interested in that.
Madam Chair, Councilwoman Gallego, when we do get requests for translations into other languages, the Communications Office with the City of Phoenix has an existing contract with a group of translators, and so we do have access to use those services to get the information, any information that we have, translated into the requested language. As for testing the website, to be sure that it does cover all of the languages, I do have experts here, so Howard Steer with Valley Metro, Melissa Swinehagen, our Deputy Public Transit Director, and Chrissy Ruiz, who is the head of our Title VI programs. Have we tested the programs to be sure?
Or do people, are they aware that it's a possibility?
Yeah. Council members, so Valley Metro does have that system, and so I think one of the things, the challenges we have, obviously, is that when people go onto the website, in order to translate it, they have to push a button to make that translation. So we definitely need to take a look at it so that it is more accessible. For our team, we do transit education throughout the region, and one of the things that we do share with a lot of these refugee populations is how to access. And so there is some training that goes on with those populations so that they are aware that they can utilize it. One thing I would mention is that when those requests do come in, we do sometimes receive those types of requests through our system, through the customer service representatives, and so we are able to do that. As Maria had mentioned, we work collectively to ensure that any information that we can translate, we can get it to those folks. But I think Valley Metro and the City of Phoenix would take a look at the existing system to make sure it's easier for those folks to access in their spoken language.
Madam Chair, Councilwoman Gallego, we will follow back up with you after we've done this review to see if there are any other improvements we can suggest to make it easier for anybody to access our materials.
Wonderful, thank you. Because we did, in the Reinvent Phoenix process, we did get some requests for information related to this, and we're trying to make sure the city doesn't have silos and that the information and those requests get to the right place.
We appreciate that.
And could you bring him back to the Subcommittee?
Absolutely.
Very good.
Wonderful.
I have a question. So if I go onto the Valley Metro website, where would I find the button that says "languages"?
Council members.
Where would I know?
Yeah, that's a good point. That's on the top row of our webpage, there is an opportunity, and unfortunately, I know when I pull it up, sometimes it doesn't pop up correctly for language translation, but there is only one opportunity right now that I believe you can utilize, and that is for Spanish. So we would need to ensure that that is more prevalent on the webpage.
Okay, because I'm here, and I'm on Home, I don't know where to go then, because all I get is Trip, Google Transit, and Next Ride. So I wouldn't know.
Councilwoman, I apologize, I'd have to look at it. I don't know exactly.
It's not, I guess what my point is, it's not prevalent. So if I was speaking another language, I would assume there would be a button saying "languages," a drop-down, and then all the different languages that I could possibly press on and have it automatically go into a translation, so.
So Madam Chair, Councilwoman Pastor, when we return, we will actually bring up the website and show how we've either made changes or how easy it is on the existing site. So we will follow back with all of those materials.
Thank you.
And if I could add real quick, Valley Metro is going through a process to revamp the webpage, and so we are taking an opportunity to utilize consultants as well as just utilizing our partners to ensure that, to your question, that we're making it more accessible for folks as they pop onto the webpage.
So to that, are you asking users as to how user-friendly it is for them and where they would like to see improvements?
Right, so good question. So we did talk about that the other day at the board meeting, and that is part of our process to ensure that the users, the end-users, are helping us define and how we lay out the actual webpage.
Great, thank you.
I think she's leading towards a great suggestion, though many of our non-English speakers probably access on their phones, and so maybe if the Translate button is near the top, that would be a great way to increase the usage. Because it's wonderful that we have the Translate function, but when I know we have thousands and thousands of people who are not comfortable in English, and their languages don't show up at all on any searches, then maybe it's just that people aren't aware of the great tool. And then I have, in here, we talk about what languages are commonly spoken besides English, and it mentions African. And I would just love it if we could clarify that we mean all African languages and not that there is, that we believe there is a language, African, because I think.
Any other comments, questions? Items four through eight are for consent. Do you have any other questions on any of those? Would you like to make a motion?
I make a motion that we approve items four through eight.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much. Northwest Extension, Maria, I think you're still on.
Madam Chair, members of the Subcommittee, item nine is the update on the Northwest Extension of the light rail system, which is the most recent addition to the system, and it's currently under construction, taking light rail from Montebello north to Dunlap along 19th Avenue. Here to give more detail is, as you said, Maria Hyatt, Public Transit Director, and Albert Santana, our Light Rail Coordinator.
So Madam Chair, members of the Subcommittee, we're getting very close and very excited about the progress on the Northwest Extension. Having just attended the Mesa celebration of the three miles that they've opened up and seeing the excitement within the Mesa community about those three miles, the businesses, all of the Mesa residents, and probably a lot of other cities' residents coming in to join, just made me think about how important, again, remind me how important this Northwest Extension is. You guys have lived with us for quite a long time as we've gone through our construction, and long before that, the planning on this project. And it's just exhilarating, really, to get to that final piece where you can see so much. Albert's going to walk through this, so you can visually see if you haven't had a chance to be out on the alignment lately, but I think in the end, it's really going back to our passengers. When you look at this area of 19th Avenue, you've got significant number of residents, a lot of multifamily housing, and then single-family housing behind that. We have seven schools, and I'm probably stepping on Albert's toes, but we have so many people that are just waiting for this, to be able to connect with the rest of the city. So Albert's going to give an update on where we are with the Northwest Extension. It's exciting times, thank you.
Thank you, Maria, and as she described, this is a pretty exciting time for the whole area there, and as a part of that, I did want to take a slight second and just introduce some of the individuals that are out there every day, working hard to really bring this project in, not just on time, but actually a little early and really bringing the community together. So I won't name everybody by names, but for the staff that are out there on 19th Avenue, if you could just stand up really quick, and I'd like to publicly recognize you all, and Valley Metro staff as well, you're all here. But these are the individuals that really, they do truly carry all of the weight out there, and you'll see this as a part of this. So the map that you see in front of you is one you've probably seen before, but this represents the 3.2-mile extension there in the green line with the, with three stations, one at Glendale, again at Northern, and then also in the southwest corner of 19th Avenue and Dunlap, which will also have a park-and-ride. And as Maria said, we've had a lot of construction. We broke ground in January of 2013, and the grand opening cannot come soon enough, and I know the community is anxiously waiting for it, the businesses are waiting for it, the schools, all of the stakeholders out there, and we're happy to be at the final stretch here and bringing it home. Here's just a couple of pictures and a couple of the utility partners that we work with, but virtually every utility that's known to Phoenix was along 19th Avenue, and we've relocated them, and we are now completed with this very important, critical piece of the project. After finishing the utilities, the next piece of work, which has also now been 100% completed, which was the pouring of the guideway, the connecting of all of the tracks, so we now do have tracks all the way up to 19th Avenue and Dunlap, and then putting back the roadway. All the roadway work has been completed, all the sidewalk work has been completed, and you'll start to see landscaping and all of the other things coming onboard, which takes me to the next piece, which is the stage that we are at now, which we're about 60% complete, which is putting the stations. So if you do have the chance to drive the corridor, virtually every station is at a different level of completion, but this is a picture of that activity. Once we do finish our stations, and we're starting to do all of the overhead wires are being installed, and I believe we actually have wires now installed all the way throughout the project, the next phase that we'll quickly move into around October, November, is we'll actually start to do some vehicle testing in the later part of this year, early next year, and then with a grand opening at the end, and I'll speak a little bit more about that as we move forward. Another part of this job is working with the community specifically about the art elements. Valley Metro, which is very similar to what the City of Phoenix does, we have a community art program, and the conversations virtually with the neighborhoods and with all the stakeholders saying, as a part of this, we're going to be adding art, and what kind of art would complement your area. Specifically at the park-and-ride, the Royal Palms neighborhood and the school surrounding there, there's actually three schools at that intersection, they thought that since we would have this place of a park-and-ride and actually a station that was outside of 19th Avenue, as a part of this, could we create some type of a community plaza? So it's still under construction, there's a picture there that shows it, but this is going to be a nice kind of remada with some benches, and it incorporates some little artwork that the students did, everything from them drawing things like basketball courts or trees and flags, and so those yellow cones that you see there, what the artist's concept was, is as the sun makes its way over, if you're standing under that remada, as it comes over, the shade and the reflection for those art pieces will actually be in the concrete there underneath the remada. So it's kind of cool, and once you're, it's hard to tell once you're away from it, but once you're there and under it, and then it also has a nice little shaded area for people, and it's just on the east side of the station entry, and the kids now, and this is said much better by people at the school and some of the teachers and the community members, but as these children grow older and become adults or go into college, they'll forever have something that is a part of this when they were there as kids going to school, so the artwork will be there between now and be there permanently. So that's just one part of the art. It doesn't stop there at the park-and-ride, though. Virtually every station and every, what we call, traction power stub station, which is a fancy way of saying that's the train's battery, we have artwork throughout the entire three-mile corridor, and again, the concept is the same, working with those particular neighborhoods about things that they wanted to see around the station. And so here's another piece that will be closer to like 19th Avenue and Butler, as well as over on 19th Avenue and Northern, and a lot of the focus is around the station platforms, as well as around these substations that are complemented by the artwork versus just having a substation building sitting out in the neighborhood. One of the, if not the most important, part of this is all about safety, especially like Maria said, there are seven schools within this three-mile corridor, and so it's very important for us to be proactive and be consistent and ongoing with our safety campaign. So here are a couple of graphics and photos of staff working with the kids at the school. We do have everything in this corridor, in English and Spanish printing, but if there ever were services that we needed, one, for example, was a business owner that their first language was Thai, and so we were able to actually be able to procure a translator for that. Another school in the area is a school for the deaf, and so what we did was work specifically with that principal and all of their staff, and even some of the construction staff actually went to the school and got trained on some basic things for sign languages, to be able to let them know where to cross safely, to stop, and so that was a whole learning process as a part of the construction project. So this corridor has a very, very diverse mix of stakeholders, which is great in what public transit is all about. The other key piece that I wanted to bring you all up to date, and this has been a very sensitive part to the project, is the Business Assistance Program. And Councilman Gates, at the very beginning of this project, we had some very sensitive conversations and meetings with business owners, and we've really done, and the staff has done a great job working with the business community. The four main parts of it is really how do we keep business retention during the construction of the project? How can we work with the businesses to minimize their construction impacts? Communication is always critical throughout the entire process, and then also starting to have that conversation now that the light rail is getting closer to be completions, how can you, as a business owner, use that as a resource? And really, those are the four main purposes, are the four main categories for our Business Assistance Program. We've had all types of activities. Every month since the project's inception, we've had a partnership with Friends of Transit, and we have a lunch event on the third Tuesday of every month. The promotion to drive traffic there is the first 100 individuals to arrive, get $5 off their lunch, and if sometimes we go beyond 100 people, Friends of Transit has been nothing but nice to us, and they go beyond that if we get over 100 people, which is all great for the businesses. Metro Max is a program that's overseen by Valley Metro, and what it does is offer hundreds of businesses in the area, and they can advertise and put different promotions up, and then Valley Metro uses their resources to let the greater community know where these businesses are and how they could get access to that. But by and large, what we now know on this project, as well as others, is at the end of the day, it's all about access, access during construction. So we worked really hard between Valley Metro and specifically our street department, and coming up with customized business access signs, which is represented on the photo on the bottom picture there. And usually, when you drive through a construction project, you would see a sign similar to this, and it would simply say "Business Access." But given the unique duration and the complexity of this project, we actually were able to work with the street transportation department and help become flexible on the signage, and you actually have customized names on these, so it doesn't just say "Business Access", it actually says, in this case, "Crisbridge Village Access," or if it was "Thai Lotus" or "Weinberger," they actually get their names on there so their customers know exactly how to get in and out of that. And that, by and large, is the most important piece that we hear from the businesses, because at the end of the day, again, whether we do advertising or promotions, if the customers don't know how to get there, then it's all for nothing. So that's a big, big part of this program. Here's some other specialized services that we do as a part of this. The City of Phoenix, we made a decision at the beginning of this, and Mayor and Council were very supportive of this. We, too, implement resources to put specifically for business assistance, and so there's been over 100 businesses that have utilized our consulting services. To give you an example, there's a salon on the southwest corner of 19th Avenue and Northern, and one of the big things she wanted to do at the beginning of this was work with a consultant, and if we had any resources to help create a website for her salon and be able to actually do online reservations, which she didn't have that resource before. So that was just one example of where our consultants went in and provided a website at our cost, and now she has that ability. We also help with graphic designing. A lot of these restaurants and locations actually were, we had the ability to train them on QuickBooks, which is a way for them to do their accounting, so there's just a lot of mix of services that we were able to provide, and now these businesses will have that forever going forward, once we're done and out of their way, they now have these things. One unique thing that we did do, and I want to mention it, is the third bullet point there, which is the Bethany Niedd and Dunlap Merchants, B2D, the logo you see there, which was, our friends at Valley Metro helped to create that for them. One of the big, again, lessons learned from the first time we did light rail in Phoenix was developing and establishing an alliance, a merchants group with them, because every month, if not twice a month, the main project teams meets with these business owners, and it's a platform for whether they can do networking amongst each other. Sometimes we bring in speakers for them to talk to them through social media or any topic they want to learn about, but also they get updates from the contractor and the contractor superintendent about what's going on with the project, when's the next time we're going to have a crossing, any kind of update. So that's been a great forum and a great platform for a relationship that we've had ongoing with the businesses, and that's been in existence even before we broke ground on the job. Here's some, just some examples that we wanted to share with you. We did some holiday shopping. One of the things the business community said was, especially around that Black Friday or Christmas time or whenever, so we actually went out and each one of these, we sent out 12,000 direct mailers throughout the community, because one thing we did learn in working with the neighborhood is that they understood the importance of now more than ever, they needed to support these local businesses in their community. And so we did it during springtime or spring break, or we did it during holiday time, Christmas or Thanksgiving, and we got really good reviews from many of the restaurants and businesses in the area that said that they actually started to see a lot of these coupons coming back into their business, so we know that it actually worked, and it was a good thing. And I'll kind of end with these last couple of slides, and I can't say it enough, the collaboration on this project was like no other project that I've had the chance to work on, and many folks have said that. The picture there on the bottom right, which has some goofy guy that looks a lot like myself, but the other individuals in there, some of which are here today as well, this is a photo, and the Washington Elementary School District, which has five of these seven schools along this corridor, they have an award that they give out to a partner in general, and it's their highest level, which represents partnership with the school district. And I'm proud to say that with everything going on with construction and how complex it is, and how long it is, and how challenging it is, they actually awarded the Northwest Extension Project Team their highest award for our partnership, and I think that truly speaks to the work that's been done and all that we've learned on this. And so that was a really big day for all of us involved. And here are just some photos, just showing some of the stuff at the schools and working with the kids, and many of the great donations and partnerships that the contractor has done with this area. Lots of interaction with students, again, just knowing that you have thousands of kids in the area, it really became a core piece of what staff would work with every day in making sure that those kids were safe around the construction, and they also got to learn a little bit about the project before. One additional thing that the contractor did was bring on three college interns and also worked with the Washington High School, which is, and got some of those students that they were interested in construction management, or engineering, or project management, that this was something that they could come out and learn a little bit about the job. So we were using it as a way of creating some professional development for some of the youth in the area as well. Again, just some more pictures about some of the collaboration with principals, and then one thing I want to spend a second on is, and this was something we did a little different, which was with the help of Valley Metro and the contractor, we created a project app. Again, everything in today's world seems to be going to some kind of an app, so we figure, why not utilize that technology? And so this allowed us to do several things in a very efficient, a very innovative way, which is, one, we had a listing, once you clicked on the app, you can click on a button here, and it will give you a listing of all the businesses in the corridor by category. You could also check in once you were there, so we could start to track where people were going in the corridor. And then every Friday, this was connected to a Twitter as well, and if you were just driving the area, you would get updates on all of the different construction activities. So this served a lot of great purposes for us, and we could quickly update tens of thousands of people by, through the app that we created for the project. So it was a little different, and we, as a city, we were supportive in trying to advertise and make sure as many people knew that we had a project app. And last, but definitely not least, again, this is a lot of collaboration, a lot of creative ideas, and so we came up at the very beginning with the project mascot, and so Doug St. Stevens actually was a former employee of the contractor, but he had a Twitter, he had a Facebook, he had everything, and so as he would traverse the project, whether he was going out to Subway for something to eat, or dealing with the utility issue on the corner, it was a kind of a creative, fun way of letting people know what was going on, if you were following the project mascot throughout, and he's still there, and he actually did a nice video where they jumped across the track when they did their final track pour, and so he's kind of an interesting little character. We have a very creative contractor. And then the final slide, just letting you all know some of the upcoming activities we are going to be doing here. We had an event, and due to weather, we had to reschedule, so we're looking at doing a milestone event about completing the stations in the later part of October, early November, and then, like I said, going into vehicle testing, and then in the first quarter of next year, the big thing that we've all been waiting for, which is the actual grand opening. So with that, again, this was just for information to let you know kind of how things are going and how we're wrapping up out there, but if there are any questions, I'm definitely happy to answer them.
No questions? I do have a couple cards. Do the cards? Shannon? McBaid?
Right.
Oh, sorry. Do you like to come up to the microphone, please? Uh-huh.
Hi. I just was listening to the update, and I just felt compelled that I wanted to jump out of my seat and tell you that I live in that area. That 19th Avenue corridor is my home, and it has been for over 50 years. So I also work in that area, and I, my daughter goes to school in that area, and I've had the privilege of working with this team, and this could all just sound like theory and a report that just they hoped happened, but it really has created a collaboration and a community, and their efforts have been outstanding, and these people have become my friends, and the opportunities that our community has had along the way and will have in the future is amazing. I'm so excited about what's going to happen along our 19th Avenue corridor, so I'm grateful for these individuals and for the plan and for the project and how it's gone, so thank you.
Thank you. That is so nice to hear, because that's not usually the comments we receive. Jill, did you want to speak? Come on. We know you're not shy.
My name is Jill Hicks, and I'm with the Washington Elementary School District, and I just really want to reiterate what Shannon said, in that our community wants this, we need this, this is what we want, and now it's coming, and not only is it coming, but along the way, we've been able to be a part of the process, and you know, the little art, well, Doug St. Stevens, we all know Doug, like, that's really cool. We have thousands and thousands of kids, and they're following this and thinking it's really cool and thinking that they're a part of the action, and they did get the Lamp of Learning Award, and that doesn't often happen, and to my knowledge, it's never happened to three groups coming together in a partnership to do something, you know, along 19th Avenue affecting five of our schools, but it did, and it's been awesome, and I mean, we're going to be a little bit sad when it's over, we're excited for it to be done, but we're going to be a little bit sad, because these people are our friends, we've been involved in every step of the way, we feel like that, I mean, nobody's been hurt, and we have thousands of kids right along this, right along this little three-mile stretch, and not only that, but the artwork and just the details that they did to involve us with not only scheduling and safety, but the fun stuff. They came into the classrooms, they participated in things that we had, they gave updates when we asked, they came to block watch meetings anytime, at night, morning, weekends, that we wanted them to, and so I'm just, again, thankful and grateful, and on behalf of the five schools that are along that route, we're just enthusiastically excited about what's happening, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Do you have questions, Councilman Gates?
Yep, thank you, Madam Chair, and Jill, thanks for the comments, and one of the reasons that this was such a success was because the Washington Elementary School District was such an incredible partner from the beginning, so thank you, thank you for all of that. Albert, I mean, home run, fantastic job, and it's great for everyone to learn who hasn't been following this, of all the hard work that you've done. Look, these things are tough. These are, I mean, let's not kid ourselves, you know, it has a significant impact on businesses and the community, and what you've done is make it as bearable as possible, but it's tough. And you referenced the situation we had, I mean, it was, it was heart-wrenching, so you know, that's one thing, I guess my one cautionary tale, because we're about to move into a very significant expansion, many more miles of the impact, and so as good as this was, you know, you and I know, you've got to get that much better for the next time. And so, I mean, all these, for example, the business, the Merchants Association, I mean, that's fantastic, and that's something that goes forward, in fact, they're having a big meeting on Thursday night, talking about the future of the area, and that wouldn't have happened without this project and without your work, so thanks for that. Open Door Fellowship, you know, they were never engaged, really not engaged in the community before, and because of light rail, now they're a big part of Royal Palm, you know, hosting all these meetings, and they're making a positive impact, thanks to your work. Couple of questions, though, security, so you know, I've got, this doesn't come to District Three, but as you know, it comes right to the, right to the edge of District Three, and so this will be an opportunity for my residents to access light rail, but I know, you know, the number one question, I'm getting it already, is the security of that lot, you know? Can they feel comfortable parking their cars there to access the light rail? So can you talk about, you know, and give me some, some information I can take back to Moon Valley and other parts of District Three, so that people can feel... to Moon Valley and other parts of District Three so that people can feel comfortable parking there?
And Councilman Gates, thank you for the comments. And yes, it has been a, a long project, but I do think the community has really come together in multiple levels. And to answer specifically your question, we do, we do get that question a lot about security, et cetera. Valley Metro does have a great relationship with our Phoenix Police Department. In fact, they recently hired one of our former light rail lieutenants, Lieutenant Ruiz, who's over there, which has been a great benefit in putting their plan together and how they're mobilizing their staff. They do have a, so they have private security guards that are at the park and ride. So there's one at Monobello, then there would be one at 19th Avenue in Dunlap. In addition to that, we also have security fair inspectors that ride the trains, actually there at the trains. And then they'd also work with our transit enforcement unit. So you've got a transit enforcement unit. And I believe this area is unique in the sense that you've got two police precincts. So when we put all that together, it's a lot more eyes and ears. And then above and beyond that is the, the security cameras that we have at the park and ride in the lots, throughout the entire lot. So it's about 500 spaces there on 19th Avenue and Dunlap, and then also on the platform themselves, and then on the trains themselves. So we've got a lot of eyes and ears there. And one of the good things with the cameras that are watching this park and ride and watching the trains and watching the platforms is that they're live feed. So it's not recorded video, it's actually live feed. And there are staff 24/7 at our operations control center watching all of these things happen, which have direct connections when needed to our police department or whoever would need to, to respond. So the way that we answer it is, is that as these extensions move into your neighborhood, you're virtually getting another precinct from the police department, which is the transit enforcement unit. So that will come in along with your geographic precinct. And then in addition to that, you're going to get the Valley Metro inspectors, as well as the Valley Metro security guards that will all be a part of this. And the big thing, I think, for us is utilizing not just those additional resources, but also making sure that we have those technology advancements in there. And then there's the emergency call buttons that will be on the platform as well as in the park and ride. So every security resource that we have is in full force. As we know, that's the number one thing is safety and, and customer experience. And so I hope that kind of answers some of it.
That does, that's, that's great to know. And I think it's really important that we get that word out and let people know that it is a safe place. And Madam Chair, just a follow up to, how many spaces will there be there at 19th Avenue and Dunlap?
You won't hold me to it. I think it's 497, just under 500.
That's great. All right. Well, great, great job and congratulations in advance. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any other questions or comments?
I have. Go ahead. It's actually. To piggyback on Councilman Gates is, this is great and this is wonderful for the community, especially for those users that now have another way of accessing transit. My, my concern is safety. And what I heard is there's live feed. Are there live feed on all platforms?
Yes. Chair, Councilwoman Pastor, yes.
And in fact, Madam Chair, Councilwoman Pastor, if you ever wanted to take a field trip over to the light rail operations and control center, we would love to show you how all of that works and how they're monitored. So if you can ever get an hour of your time, we'd love to take you out and show you.
Okay. Because that really truly is, I think it's wonderful, I think it's great. But at the end of the day, in any of our transit systems across the United States, there is security and there's constant monitoring. And safety is, is, is key to me. In order for our taxpayers to embrace the expansion and embrace transit, we, we need to feel safe on, on our platforms. The other piece is, what are some of the, and I'm going to go deeper, best practices you learned on this, this piece, since we are going to expand and in the areas that we're expanding are very different in the sense of retail and business plans? And I'm hoping, I'm jumping into the future, what I am hoping is that we start now, even though it's a long term, that we start now with those areas to start writing business plans and what it's going to look like now and how is it going to look like in the future and what happens in between the middle? I'm not sure if there was any metrics done during the, during the time that we were building.
And Chair Williams, Councilwoman Pastor, absolutely so. As far as lessons learned specifically with businesses, you hit the nail on the head, which is starting that process as soon as we possibly can. So on this one, we did a little better than the first and that's natural, we're supposed to, you're supposed to learn lessons. And so we did establish things like building a, a business alliance before we broke ground and actually started to roll out the programs before. But that in itself, we know, we wish we could have started sooner. So for example, as we're doing some, some early environmental work for, both for the metro center extension, as well as for this extension going towards South Phoenix, we're already starting to incorporate business resources and business conversations with them. Of course, giving them updates about what the planning process is, but specifically talking about business assistance elements now. And we're several, several years away from constructing on any of these projects. But to Councilman Gates and to Councilwoman Pastor's point, the, we needed to start that process now. So that's, that's a big part of what we're doing and that's a big lesson learned for us is during our early environmental work, even though it's very technical about what we're looking at during the environmental piece, we're incorporating a business element component into that environmental assessment, which is something that we've never done or that I know of that's done throughout the country. And so we do get calls from other places saying that that's, our program does get looked at a lot by other, by other jurisdictions saying, you know, how do you all do all of these activities? And I say, honestly, it starts with our mayor and city council allowing us to allocate resources because we can't just go out and do them. We need to have the resources at the beginning. But that has been accepted by our mayor and council. But now we're, we're starting to incorporate that early in our environmental, before we even start any final design or any type of nearing of construction. So I think that's going to be the big lesson learned for us.
Councilwoman Pastor, we also recognize that what worked on 19th Avenue in this stretch may not work in other areas. They're not cookie cutter. Each one has a very unique set of circumstances and needs and culture and everything else that makes it that street and that area. And we do recognize that, for instance, having done a lot of the work on South Central already because of the Tiger Grant we received from the Department of Transportation, et cetera, we do know that that community has different needs than what we've seen on 19th Avenue. So we do know we need to customize it based on that community versus just trying to apply a cookie cutter over the top of each one of our extensions. And that is going to be working with each one of you, especially in the areas where those extensions are, to really help us make sure that we're connecting back in and recognizing all of the different aspects, as well as being as early as we possibly can.
Yeah. The last thing I would say is to Maria's point, it's not a cookie cutter, it's not a one size fits all. But the thing that we know is establishing the relationships with the neighborhood leaders, with the schools, with the social service providers, because this is their community. And so that's a big strategy that we've used on all of our light rail activities is not necessarily trying to come there and have specific only public transit type meetings, but when they're doing a holiday turkey giveaway, those are perfect opportunities and it's a safe place for the community because they've been going for years. Those, using those kind of locally accepted meetings and gatherings to, to educate people about our project. So, so there's a lot of lessons learned, but, but we got to continue to push ourselves to do better every single time because that's the right thing to do.
Any further comments or questions? There you go. We have one more card, Diane Barker. Did you, did you want to come up?
Well, good morning, Councilwoman Williams and Subcommittee. I'm a patron, I took the transit system and I took the bus and the light rail yesterday after the Buckeye game. So, you know, we, we won one and we needed that. And now we're in competition too with other teams to come here in Phoenix in January. So very excited about that. I was just up in the law department and I see that you have the light rail safety. And I noticed that it's kind of new, you know, really in this area of the United States to be using transit. I've been using it out here for 28 years. The best value really is your express bus. It beats cars, it beats a light rail and like that. And it's flexible. So, you know, I stand behind that. But you have gone ahead and you've got the plans for the corridors for the light rail. We never blame for making a franchise, taking out in the middle of the streets for the light rail. With the accidents, 176 of them of the last several months, it's past that I checked on that, show that it's always the cars making a left-hand turn or a right. Well, the thing is, when you put the light rail in the middle of the road, this is going to happen. So everybody that's involved in this, I'm asking that you, we now look at the best safety for the systems and the people that are walking. We're getting too many people that are being hit by vehicles. And that's light rail too. And, and it's, it's a concern. Phoenix has a big concern of this and you know it. And I'm appealing to you for safety, number one, and I'd like to have you have these materials. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Maria, Albert, I just want to congratulate you. I know we're not done. We've got five ways to go, but it's very impressive, the improvement you have made and how you have built the community support and recognize. I can remember when we first started and it was one horror story after another. I mean, you just felt so badly for so many people, for businesses, for residents. It was a miserable, miserable experience. And I have heard so many good things about this, not only from Jill and from the kids, but some from the business owners, that you have truly included people, you have listened. And I think that's the big difference. You took their advice, you understood their needs and incorporated into a working mechanism that not only helped you get the stations, the rail, and the huge utility relocation, I know was gigantic in this area. But it all worked for everybody. So thank you for what you're doing. I'm looking forward to seeing completion and continuation. So, thank you. That takes us to item 10, which is the MAG Award Design Funding for Two City of Phoenix Bicycle Improvement Projects.
Madam Chair, members of the Subcommittee, as you know, the Streets Department works very hard to maintain the many miles and miles of streets out in the city, great city of Phoenix. The other thing that they work very hard at is promoting and building and improving our bicycle infrastructure and our bicycle program. And here today to talk about the latest in a couple of grants from Maricopa Association of Governments on improving bicycle projects is Ray Del Valina, our Street Transportation Director, and Eileen Yazi from Street Transportation. Ray?
Thank you, Mario. Good morning, Madam Chair and Committee Members. This is a great opportunity that we continue to have with the collaboration that we have with Maricopa Association of Governments. This program has been in existence for well over 19 years. We've been very successful in working with the, with MAG and getting these funds. Here today, we have Eileen Yazi, she's our newest member to the team, a special projects administrator. And she's going to talk about two projects that we have that promotes pedestrian and bicycle connectivity and, and as well as transit aspects to it.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you. First time. Madam Chair, members of the Subcommittee, thanks for your time this morning. A quick overview, Maricopa Association of Governments, they're the regional plan agency for the region. They work with all of the incorporated cities and towns in Maricopa, and then as well as a few in Pinal County at this point, and as well as representatives from both the counties. And then too, they also include Valley Metro and, as well as with ADOT and some other state board members of the Transportation Committee. Every year, again, as Ray mentioned, for the past 19 years, they've been handing out money specifically for design assistance. What that means is that they're not handing out federal aid for construction at this point, but they're giving the cities or allowing them to come in and compete for a lag up to get to 15% design plans, which means that we really are getting our foot in the door for some future bike and ped projects. So in June 20, on June 29th, the City of Phoenix staff, we submitted two applications. One was on Oak Street, and I'll get to that in just a second, and one on Missouri Avenue. And we requested $85,000 and $68,000 just for these 15% design plans. And I'll briefly go over those. So Missouri Avenue, 43rd Ave to 15th Avenue, as you can see, it's a, it's a decent size of a project. And this is a collector's street in central Phoenix. It's obviously one half mile south of Bethany Home and one half north of Camelback. And right now, we're really looking forward to turn this into kind of a, really a good, low-impact, safe bicycle corridor. We obviously have to cross the I-17, which is part of the 15% plan. We did work on a similar project on Maryland Avenue. There is a bike, bike and ped crossing at this point. We see an opportunity in the future for construction funding. Right now, MAG, ADOT, and FHWA, they're in, they're starting a brand new study on the I-17 and what to do for it in the future. And we see if, if this is, makes sense for the community, and it also makes sense, you know, logistically, is that there could be funding for construction in the future. When it comes to scoring, how this project went through the MAG process, there are seven schools related to this corridor alone. And it's also, again, it links highly with transit. It links to our light rail line over at 19th Avenue. It does have a station right there too. And there's a lot of connectivity that we think that this bicycle and pedestrian improvement can really facilitate, again, safe travels in that corridor. Currently, again, you obviously see there's a barrier of the freeway that we're looking to address and how to, again, get across that and how, how it could make sense. And then as well as looking for signing and striping along the rest of the corridor. The other project that was submitted from staff was Oak Street on 3rd Street to 20th Street. And there's also some really great nexus's that are happening right now along this corridor. 3rd Street right now, it's already projected to have a future bike lane that's in our CIP. It's a funded project. At 7th Street on the north, north-south section there, there's actually a HAWK, the High Intensity Activated Crossing, so bicyclists and pedestrians can activate that signal and get across there safely. And then continuing from 7th to 16th and 12th, again, some areas are designated as a bike route, but we're really looking to kind of, you know, amp it up a little bit and really have bike lanes and a more signage. And then the nice thing is that at, at 20th Street and, or just right at the 51, there is a bicycle and pedestrian crossing already. So this is really kind of making that really, really enhancing that connection to provide opportunities. And when it comes to schools, there's five schools along this corridor as well. So really looking to promote those connections for bike and ped. And we really think that from the downtown and connecting downtown with that 7th Street safe crossing and that 3rd Street bike lanes, in the future, once we do receive federal, once we do have construction monies put towards this, this really could be a good connector for a lot of different communities to come downtown safely via bike. Here's some current assessments of Oak Street. Again, you can see the HAWK right now. There is bike share on Oak Street at 12th Street. So it's a bike-friendly community that does support bicycling right now. But there's definitely, from the two top pictures noted, there's definitely some areas for improvement to identify specifically what those bike improvements could be. When it comes to, you know, what it, what it means in the future and what could be there, again, we could be looking at the, obviously, the freeway overpass, trying to get across the I-17, striping, signing, and then as well as some notifications in the street too. So these are all possibilities, including even a buffered bike lane as it, as it seems appropriate. So how did we do? So we submitted these applications in June, June 29th, the MAG Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee, they met in July. There was a total of nine local agencies that submitted projects. There was 13 total. We ranked number three and four, which was really exciting. So we received full funding for both projects as well. One thing to note, both of these projects are identified in our BikeWay master plan. So, and then as well as too, is the Transportation Division. We work with PND, they're, because Reinvent Phoenix touched both of these projects as well. So this was really a great collaboration of Reinvent Phoenix and of the Bike Master Plan. They were ranked, I believe it was 13th and 19th in the Bike Master Plan to continue moving these projects forward. And when it comes to future construction, obviously that's in the future, we want to get through design. But as noted in our CIP, we have $2 million set aside annually for bike and ped improvements to support the Bicycle Master Plan, as well as MAG has federal funds available every year through a competitive process. And as well as, again, we think we have a really big opportunity in that spine, that I-17 study by ADOT and MAG for future fundings for that crossing. This does conclude my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions? I do. Councilwoman? The far right picture, where's that one?
I believe that's the one at, at 20th, at Oak Street, yeah, in the 51.
If you go back to your slide, the Oak Street.
The Oak Street one? Or Maryland?
Well...
Or Missouri, sorry.
This one's actually perfect, too. If you look at to the right, that is a collector's street. And we really need to look at that and look at the bike lanes, but also the beautification of that area. If you go back to your map, between Third and 20th, I rode that. And actually, the community rode it with me. And it was great, it's a great collector to do bicycle, biking in that area. But when you get to 20th Street, it's very dangerous. And there may be a crosswalk, but where you're, what's happening is you're by Phoenix Children's Hospital.
Yes.
And they're also, cars are also trying to get up onto the freeway. We really need to look at that, because it is a connector. But in addition to that, we're going to have to work, I'm assuming it's ADOT...
ADOT.
...on going up the ramp, because you can't get up that ramp. And so, we decided, do we take it or do we not take it? And we decided to take the risk of crossing over to the other side. So, we're really going to have to be conscientious of the safety of that piece, of how we connect both sides, and who we work with on demonstrating some of the needs of that area.
Madam Chair and Councilwoman Pastore, exactly. This project, as Eileen said, it's looking at a 15% scoping effort to look at the connectivity and also utilities overhead, you know, below grade. So, it's kind of looking at overall and seeing what the challenges are going to be to try to make that kind of connection, and also looking at the safety aspect of it.
Yeah. Missouri is going to have to be the same issue, too.
Definitely.
Because that connects all the way, too. And people, and it's going through neighborhoods. And so, there's going to be, I think, great effort or impact in the sense, or voices being heard as to what they want to see in that area. But the freeway will block you. There's no way around that. So, I don't know if you go up or you go, we go south or we go north, but you will hit that wall.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you for everything.
Thank you. Lovely job with your first council meeting presentation. Hope you'll be back. I think the Oak Street one is very exciting, because it will connect into Third Street. And we heard so much from the Bicycle Master Plan process about how Third Street would be a great way for people to get into downtown, and they would be more comfortable with the speed at which car traffic is going, and so might feel safer. And then this project will also take us close to the Grand Canal, which I think will be another important. So, it'll really become a system where you can go north, south, east, west, and I think that's, it's a great priority for this project in particular, because it'll help us connect a couple of great corridors. So, thanks for prioritizing this. And I can't help but ask, but who was one and two at MAG?
Um, I believe, geez, I didn't even have, I didn't even bring this information. It was. We'll blame Tempe and Glendale. I have no idea, actually.
I don't need to know the answer, but if you knew off the top of your head.
Our neighbors. See, so we're all, yeah, connecting. We're all providing that connection.
Yes, regionalism. Exactly.
Any other comments, questions? Councilman?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Great project, and just want to say thanks, Ray, to you and your department, just recently completed the bike lanes on North 32nd. They look great, and everybody's buzzing about them in the area, and they've already, I saw on Facebook, they're doing like a trick-or-treat thing. They're going to have costumes, riding bikes, so, you know, we can see, I'm sure this project will be embraced, just like that one has. So, and thanks for doing that one on the cheap. And, but you know what? You got it done. And that's what we have to do today. And it's appreciated by the constituents, and we're excited about it. So, thanks so much.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you. Excellent presentation, and we look forward to hearing the next step and great new progress.
Thanks.
I think it takes us to the next item, which is also yours, Ray. Complete Streets Program Update.
Madam Chair and Committee Members, thank you again. Here today, we're just going to give you an update on our efforts on complete streets. As you all are aware, last year, we passed a couple of ordinances, city ordinances, to identify guiding principles and also a task force, a committee for looking at this. So, here today to talk about that is Mark Melanchenko, our Special Projects Administrator.
Good morning. What I'd like to do before we begin is to recognize one of our Complete Streets Board Members, Mr. Jack Davis from District 1. He's one of our distinguished board members on the Complete Streets Advisory Board. What's happening with complete streets is, and you can kind of see here in the photo, is we're trying to bring vitality, activity back to the streets, additional modes of transportation. And we're really beginning to see that in selected areas. Downtown, with the addition of redevelopment activity at Downtown ASU, some of our improvements in light rail, bus, we're beginning to see that activity that is really linked to complete And what we've heard from the community, from various projects, is what they're interested in is unique, livable neighborhoods, multimodal connections, transit, and connectivity. That was really brought out through many of our projects, Plan Phoenix, Reinvent Phoenix. There was an overlying word in there, connectivity. How do we make those connections? And I think with our complete streets effort in adding activity and modes and options for people to use in the street, we're beginning to see that. Our board has also, which is a very diverse board with various interests, we also have non-voting members from eight departments. And with the overall goal of moving this complete streets program forward, the accomplishments thus far with the, with our process, as you all know, we had the initial two ordinances adopted by council on July of 14. One of them was the guiding principles. Those have been really the backbone of the complete streets program. And from that, we have worked with the board and other representatives from staff in developing a draft policy. That has been submitted to each of the committee members for their review. That will be going through approval process, review process, through the various boards, including the Planning Commission, DAB, as well as the Environmental Quality Commission, before coming back to the TNI Subcommittee. With that, we are also, have drafted a set of development guidelines for complete streets. We're going to be using the Urban Street Design Guide shown there from NACTO, the National Association of City Transportation Officials Guidebook. And we were using that, as well as some other information from the Institute of Traffic Engineers and other information in an addendum. But being a representative of the City of Phoenix on NACTO, we felt that it was important to adopt their guidelines, move those forward through the process. Yes, it's not a one-size-fits-all. There are a number of items in there that are geared more toward a wet environment, but we'll be using portions of that and then addressing some of the changes in the appendix. In addition, we are also beginning to look at performance measures. How do we begin to measure and monitor the success of complete streets? And as you can see in the photos here, Roosevelt before and after, I think we can see and talk to businesses to see what type of activity has taken place since those improvements have come in, wider sidewalks, additional bike lanes and transit connections, and landscaping. So, hopefully, we'll begin to see, and I think we're already beginning to see an uptick with the businesses and the activity in that corridor. But that's one way, I believe, for us to begin to monitor and to look at the success of complete streets. We also are working very diligently with other city projects and initiatives. There's a long list of projects, Plan Phoenix, Fit Phoenix, our 2050 Plan. We also are linking with some of these other projects that are underway, our parklet policy as shown here, as well as a downtown alley study that planning is leading those efforts. We are also coordinating with the Grid Bike Share Program, and as stated previously, our Tiger Grant for the Grand Canalscape. All of these, we look as components in working together with our Complete Streets Program. We're also beginning to look outside the box also. There are a number of streets that, if you see the photo on the left, there are a number of streets in our system that have side frontage roads. Well, many times, those are underutilized. We may be able to put cycle tracks or bicycle facilities in those underutilized areas. Then we would be able to keep the street capacity, but also really look at using these underutilized corridors. Those are prevalent throughout the city, one along 32nd Street. This, I think, is shown along 59th Avenue. So, that's one of the ideas that we're looking at. In addition, we are also making sure that we are connecting with our other programs, our overlay program, to make sure that we're doing everything sequentially and getting our biggest bang for our buck in the program. And lastly, we are linking very closely with community and economic development. There are nine specific focus areas that we have been working with CED on to look at infrastructure needs and improvements for ped and bike and other uses. Education and participation in groups, both nationally, state, and local, are very important to the program. These are a number of the groups that we have either participated in via webinar or speakers or been part of discussion amongst these groups and other municipalities throughout the United States. We've also had a group of national speakers from the National Complete Streets Coalition in December that was very helpful in providing information and education to the Complete Streets Advisory Board, as well as staff, in how we move the program forward. We also, in my section in streets, we are one of the areas in the city that looks at developer submittals that come into the city. We provide stipulations and guidance regarding the right-of-way. We also, we've seen a large uptick in that type of submittals into the city the past year. We're also coordinating with other developers, such as the Upgrade to the Renaissance Hotel Downtown, and how that links to the Adam Street Reactivation Study. So, we're trying to make those links improvements with our existing studies in the complete streets effort. In dealing with the developers, we also, when we meet with them, we emphasize our complete streets program and the principles that have been established and adopted by council in the program that we're moving forward, to make sure that they're fully aware of where we are. And lastly, this really ties into the first slide. What we're looking, one of the goals of the process is to develop safer, well-designed streets that people want to use. And I think we're well ahead in moving forward with that goal with our Complete Streets Program. Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, if you have any comments or questions?
I have some cards. Let's go to the cards. Victor Vidalis?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, council members. My name is Victor Vidalis. I'm actually a resident of South Central Phoenix and a business owner at 6427 South Central Avenue. And I just wanted to really emphasize the importance of the HIA work that was done, the Health Impact Assessment, particularly in the South Central Neighborhood Transit Initiative, that was completed by the Maricopa County Public Health, and the implementation of the complete streets and infrastructure connectedness on the South Central Light Rail and the surrounding areas. So, I just really wanted to bring that to the council members' attention, and hopefully that HIA becomes a part of the Complete Streets initiatives or remains a part of that as light rail begins to extend into South Central and beyond. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Jack Davis?
Good morning, and congratulations on your reelections. I want to, as a member of the Complete Streets Board, I want to thank you for the opportunity you've given me and the others to represent the city and the complete streets moving forward. It's an excellent program. It's being well-received and well-reviewed. So, the only issue that I have currently is that it's to encompass as many modes of transportation as possible. There's a part of the National Transportation Code referred to as neighborhood electric vehicles. We also know those as golf carts. So, let's talk about it as a golf cart, because that's something everyone fully understands. In the outlined communities, they have provided for the golf cart to operate within the curbside lane. Our governor in 2007, Janet Brewer, passed House Bill 2027, which allows for the safe and sane operation of the golf cart in the curb lane, that a way alleviating traffic from the transit lanes. As we move forward, we're reducing the speeds of the streets, which is going to add for more congestion, but it's also going to add for opportunity for people to utilize neighborhood-friendly electric vehicles. And it's going to be far safer if they're allowed to operate that vehicle within the curb lane. Unfortunately, at this level, in this, we can't actually change, alter, or modify. This is something that you would have to do through ordinances. I just wanted you to bring this to your attention, so that you're aware that there are 40,000 current neighborhood-friendly vehicles, or golf carts, operated in Maricopa County. And as the street speeds reduce, those numbers are going to dramatically increase, especially amongst seniors. You're not going to get seniors to possibly take a tricycle? Maybe. But more likely, they're going to operate a neighborhood-friendly vehicle, a golf cart, to go to the grocery, to go do other neighborhood activities. I would encourage you to look into and adopt House Bill 2027, which was adopted by Janet Brewer, so that we can move forward with safe and sane practices with complete streets. Thank you.
Hearing those comments, could you bring back or give us information on how our plan fits with that bill?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Okay.
And Madam Chair, wasn't there a surprise? Didn't they just adopt this? I think that'd be interesting to get some perspective.
That would work for them. We'll do so.
They continue to have robust debate in Surprise.
Yeah.
It was passed and adopted by the City of Surprise. So, it's something that is currently being utilized in other communities. It's just something we need to evaluate and make, to encompass as many modes of transportation as possible, which is the true intent of complete streets.
You're right. And it's easier to fix it in the front end than go back and try to retrofit it.
And Madam Chair, we have addressed that in various meetings that we've held with the board, where we provided additional information through research, and have included draft information regarding any of these in our design guidelines.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Next is Francisca Montoya.
Good morning, Madam Chair Williams and members of the council. I am Francisca Montoya. I come before you this morning as a board member of Academia del Pueblo, a charter school in South Central Phoenix. This slide that you have up at this moment of complete streets directly impacts our school. And let me share with you that for the past four years, I have been working with the Transportation Department to get a crosswalk for our school. Four years ago, we had approximately 180 students at Academia del Pueblo. Today, we have 404. So, we have more than doubled. I'm excited to share with you that after a long process and lots of determination and resiliency, we have won that battle, and we are getting a crosswalk. And we are getting a crosswalk in October. It's being designed right now. I think they've come and painted the street. And this is going to help us out a lot, because our parents will now be able to walk safely across the street to drop off their children. We're a K-8 school, and we continue to grow every day. Furthermore, I've also been working with Streets Department to look at a part of South Central Phoenix that seems to be still in the 1900s. The neighborhood I'm specifically speaking about is Central Avenue to 5th Street, from Durango to Mojave. That neighborhood, still today, does not have curb and gutter. It does not have sidewalks. It is not safe. So as we talk today about complete streets, I urge you to make sure that, as the city continues to improve, that we make sure that we do not lose sight that we have neighborhoods that still do not have sidewalks. I have been told, I have been informed, that that particular neighborhood is up for curb and gutter and sidewalks in about three years. I can't tell you how excited we are at the school. I can't tell you how excited the parents are. Yes, we know that these projects cost a lot of money. Yes, we know that these projects take a lot of time. But the time has come to make sure that every neighborhood and every taxpayer gets basic services from the city of Phoenix. And we're really excited also that Prop 104 passed. We worked hard to make sure that it did, so that we can get our South Phoenix Light Rail extension sometime in the near future. And to conclude, I want to reiterate what Victor Vidalas mentioned earlier, and that is the Health Impact Assessment that the Maricopa County Health Department undertook last year. I participated in that. It was a nine-month-long process, and we did come up with some recommendations for Light Rail, the South Phoenix Light Rail Extension. I urge you to take a look at that and look at the recommendations, and let's work together to make sure that those are incorporated into the design and the development of the Light Rail Extension in South Phoenix. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Reed Butler?
Thank you, Chair Williams and committee. A comment on the Complete Streets, so Reed Butler, 42 West Mariposa Street, Phoenix, Arizona. So in the 80s and 90s, when we built apartments, we didn't like the streets. So the typical design in the apartment development back then was we would put a parking lot and all of our parking on the perimeter. If you can picture 7th Street and Northern, we built the apartments at 7th Street and Northern. The buildings are pulled back, the parking is pushed out. We didn't like streets. But part of it was the speed of traffic, safety perceptions, things like that. In the 2000s and then now 2010s, there's a pretty heavy effort in the apartment industry to figure out how do we connect to the street? How do we create pedestrian walkouts from our projects? How do we soften the connection? How do we build right to the street? You're seeing that now at Central McDowell, 2nd Street and McDowell, various products that are coming forward. But there are always two obstacles that are just kind of, that just kind of sneak around that you have to deal with if you're on the private sector development side. One is those nasty little retention basins that we have to deal with, right? And I've talked about this for years. Retention creates a problem. Often, we'll put that retention on the perimeter up against the street, and the retention basin, two, three, four feet deep. If some of you have been to Roosevelt Commons, you've seen the retention basins we have there. They act to interfere with the connection between the buildings and all these beautiful things we do with the sidewalk. So are there more creative ways to deal with retention without necessarily increasing the cost on the private project? But that always becomes an obstacle. A second obstacle is another pesky thing called liability. Again, I used to practice law, so I'm allowed to talk about this, Councilman Gates. But as we try to integrate our project with the public right-of-way and create things like paseos, other pedestrian walkways, shade canopies, benches, I mean, something as simple as benches, we always have this discussion with the city, who takes the liability? If we, as a private property owner, invite the public to come take a rest on a bench or come into a little paseo or a pocket park, something really interesting, who takes the liability for that person if they have a slip and fall as they're coming onto the private property? So those two obstacles, I guess we would ask that staff keep focusing on those, because to me, the complete street doesn't stop at the public right-of-way. This whole discussion gets even more interesting if we can extend that street a little bit into the private project. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Very interesting. Any comments, questions? Hearing none. Okay, Councilwoman?
I'm going back to Francisca's point. And so my question is, how do those neighborhoods get embedded into the complete streets? Those neighborhoods that don't have sidewalks are, as she said, in the 1900s. There are several streets in Maryville that are like that. And I would like to know how, what do those neighborhoods need to do? And what is the process? And then how do they become part of the complete streets?
So, Madam Chair and Councilwoman Pastore, I'll start off. We used to have a very aggressive sidewalk installation and street modernization program. Through the years, because of the state funding sweeps of our gas funding that we get, that program has kind of gone down significantly. And so we do have an assortment of a lot of different locations that we have that we're missing curb and gutter and sidewalk. We've been working slowly through the areas. The last program that we had was the Bond Program, the 2006 Bond Program. And through that program, we still identified a lot of areas. Just for example, the Golden Gate Community on the west side, there's probably between $3.5 to $4 million just in that area to cover curb and gutter and sidewalk. So one of the challenges that we get into is, number one, is funding. Number two is sometimes we need to get right-of-way. And that becomes a major issue, as well as some of utilities. We might have SRP, we might have overhead power lines. So those become major factors in trying to identify, or trying to identify the correct funding for the particular project. So we do have an assortment of locations that we need to do, both in the West Phoenix, South Phoenix, and all different areas in Phoenix. So looking forward, and as we've identified new funding through the proposition for T-250, we're going to be identifying those locations to better affect the implementation of those sidewalks and curb and gutters, as well as drainage. Because every time we put curb and gutter, we're going to have drainage. So that could be another element that might not have, that we might not have, that just putting curb and gutter might create other problems. So with that, also, working with the Complete Streets Program, looking at any project that we're doing along the corridors, any areas, to make sure that we're having that connectivity. What are we doing from point A to point B? How are we connecting people? What's the best connections? And making sure that we address those connections. With that, anything else?
We're also trying to address that with some creative solutions via grant applications. That area was part of our full grant application for Tiger for South Central, where we looked for improvements between the sevens. It wasn't approved, but I think we had a very strong application with those improvements. So I think we'll continue to look at those other avenues for funding also, when applicable.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As well, in the Sunny Slope area, we have areas that are in need of curb and gutter as well, and I know you guys know about that. Thank you, ma'am, and congratulations on your success at Academia del Pueblo. Having formerly served on Friendly House Board, that's exciting to hear that. But you raise a great point, which is, and I really do hope that you're looking at this in the Complete Streets process, because, and I know this is something that's near and dear, really, to all my colleagues, we have a lot of new charter schools like Academia, and they're creating new challenges in the neighborhoods. And I know Basis Phoenix opened on North 32nd, and they have, up to this point, been able to, unable to get a crosswalk on North 32nd, because there are not sufficient number of students who live within the neighborhood. And so I don't know if that's a possibility for you all to look at that as you move through this, because, again, this gets to safety, and it's another thing that I think ought to be put into the equation. Thanks for the presentation here. Mark, thanks for your work. Thank you for providing us with a draft of the Complete Streets policy. I really do appreciate that. You and I had the opportunity to meet last week, so these comments are not going to be a complete surprise. But again, I have some of the same concerns that I raised before, that there's a kind of a one-size-fits-all approach here. And I know you guys are trying to address this, but I really want to pass on these comments as this is looked at, looked at in further detail by our citizen boards. You know, the purpose, implementation of this policy ensures all public streets and private transportation facilities within the city. And I know Councilwoman Williams has talked about this. Again, I like the concept of trying to get more of these principles in place in the city of Phoenix, but they don't necessarily fit everywhere. And the language in this policy is very, you know, uncertain, right? We have a lot of shals and things like this, and I think that we ought to, you know, the city will ensure, et cetera. So again, to the extent that we can give both your department and the council people who represent these districts a little bit of flexibility, I think that's extremely important. Specifically, I mean, the way you get into this, the Complete Streets Advisory Board, as we move forward with projects, the way this is laid out, Complete Streets principles have to apply. And it takes, you know, an act of Congress to avoid that. And I think, and I'm very concerned about that. For example, it says to have an exception from the Complete Streets policy, there has to be, must be approved by the city council based upon recommendation of the Director of Streets Transportation and the Director of Planning and Development, and be documented with supporting data that indicates a basis for the exception. And then, as we get down to the exceptions, it says, "exceptions can only be considered for approval if the activities are emergency maintenance activities, or the application of Complete Streets principles would be contrary to public safety, or the application of Complete Streets principles would have significant adverse historic, cultural, or environmental impacts." That is so limited, and I really feel like this language is tying the hands of those of us who represent our individual districts. It's great to incorporate these things. I think Roosevelt, that's a great example where these principles can be very beneficial. But to tie our hands so much, again, I don't mean to go overboard here, but I just, we need to give the representatives, you know, we're the elected representatives. We need to have the ability to not, you know, not have Complete Streets principles in those instances where that may just be what our residents want. So it's, you know, it doesn't have to be a public safety issue, but simply, you know, the residents maybe don't want to see it in particular areas. I think District, I, you know, hate to keep pointing to Councilwoman Williams, but I think District 1 is a great example of it. So I'm supportive of the principles, but if you can give us all a little bit more flexibility here, I think it would be good as we move forward through the process. Again, I know we're very early on, and I can't thank you enough, Mark.
And as we discussed, your comments would be helpful, very helpful to the process.
Great. Thank you so much.
I want to jump in and support him 100%. But during this conversation, it made me think of something I don't think I have heard about as this policy has been developed. For decades, the city of Phoenix has done a trail system through the parks, all the way from South Mountain to Prescott. Included in that are equestrian trails. Where in the Complete Streets Program do the horses fit? Where do they cross? Where do they ride? How do they get to the bridges and to the trails?
That's a good point, Madam Chair. We do know that we have a couple of these trails that identified as separate studies that Planning and Development, Plan and Development Department has created, for example, 24th Street and 32nd Street, south of the river, Salt River. Basically, it's a loop that goes from Salt River down to South Mountain, comes up to 32nd Street. So there are certain locations that we've identified that specifically, to my knowledge. I don't know if we've identified something like that in the Complete Streets.
Mark's department has a huge map. Throughout the whole valley.
Equestrian was addressed in the draft design guidelines to be context-sensitive, say to the Levine area, and others that are...
I think you forgot a couple areas.
Yeah, I know, in North Phoenix. But just as an example, there are specific areas in Phoenix that are equestrian-friendly.
So what are you going to do to bring this into the package? Because Penny wants to know.
Well, Madam Chair, I think it's looking at all the neighborhoods differently. I mean, all of the neighborhoods are different. Neighborhoods up north are going to be different to neighborhoods in the urban, more urbanized areas. So it's identifying more of a context-sensitive design of what are the elements that are being created, that need to be created within a community, and tying those elements within that community for this complete street. So I think for our purposes of the Complete Streets, it doesn't eliminate or it doesn't distract from not adding those elements. It's looking at what the community needs to have to make that connectivity, both to all the individuals that live in that community, as well as their wants and needs within that transportation network of that area.
Thank you. Great. But a lot of these have been established for decades. I mean, what happens to Central? That Murphy Trail has been there for what, 50, 60 years? Do we now eliminate it or ignore it? Or do we provide a way for people to still use it and be compatible with whatever you're going to do?
Well, Madam Chair, the policy that we're creating doesn't eliminate what's already out there. It might further enhance it. That could be one element, or identify other areas that need further connectivity or completion of certain elements. So it's looking at more of a project. It's not going out and if there's already an existing trail or something like that, we're going to go and rip it out. It's more of, okay, we have missing curb and gutter, we have missing sidewalks. How do we, when we look at a project, how are we doing and looking at those projects and including those elements of complete streets? That's what we do.
That's where you come into conflict with some of this, because a lot of the horse trails, sidewalks were purposely eliminated, so that there was a walkable path that was safe for people riding along the streets. 51st Avenue is one that comes right to mind. 43rd goes through my neighborhood and goes all the way north. I have some concerns, especially on how rigid this is, that it doesn't really account for all the varieties of neighborhoods that we have in this city that we value. People that live in my area, we want our animals, we want our horses, we want the carriages. We don't have sidewalks and curb and gutters. But it was designed on purpose that way. And I can go on out further north in my area. And in fact, District 1 and 2, both, and I believe out west, same thing. So I just want to caution us not to get so rigid. I understand Central City and the projects, and I admire these people. I think it is absolutely the best thing that could happen to the city of Phoenix. But I don't want us to lose our unique flavor, that you have so many options in the city of Phoenix for a lifestyle. And I think that's what makes us valuable, makes us attractive to people that come here. And I know where you're headed, but I'm just cautioning you to slow down and consider all the possibilities. So, anyway.
Madam Chair, as an example, in dealing with that, as I said before, there are development submittals that come through the group that I manage. And one of them that was recent was, there was a North Central Avenue adjacent to North Central, you know, residential area which has suburban lots. They have just rolled curb and no sidewalks, so people use the street. And we addressed a new development over there, and we looked at the possibility of us putting in sidewalks to start that process, and we felt that it was not conducive to that area to add sidewalks, because it had this suburban feel already. So we looked at the contact sensitivity for each one of those areas and try and make a logical, smart decision.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Any other further questions? Councilman?
Thank you for your work on this. It's been many, many years in the making, and it's exciting to see it moving forward. It's been, we in other subcommittees have been working on a lot of redevelopment, and it's been exciting to see how often Complete Streets helps some of our older neighborhoods with redevelopment. So some of the policies in this area, particularly like in Midtown, we see that if the city can invest in upgrading our infrastructure, that really... can invest in upgrading our infrastructure, that really spurs the private sector to take it to the next level. And I've seen it in the warehouse district portion of my district, where small investments in Complete Streets really change the feel of a community and help us bring in the jobs that we want to see in these neighborhoods that so deserve good, high-wage career jobs. So I think it's neat that when we're working across city departments and really investment on the street side can spur other goals that are very important to those of us on the council. So I'm excited to see it. I was also very glad to see we're focusing on metrics. It is such a big city, and it's so helpful for us as policymakers to see as we move forward and understand those numbers citywide. As I look at this, I'm thinking a lot about some of the projects we have right now in my district, and you mentioned 24th Street earlier, where the modes of transportation are very different than they are in Central City. So we talk a lot about horses specifically. And I have not spent a lot of time personally on a horse. And so when people brought up the height of traffic signals for horses, I will confess that was not something that I would have thought about otherwise. But it has been neat to see that, to me, that in that case, the Complete Streets policy has been very adaptable for different modes of transportation. And so I think when we talk about multimodal, it really does mean different things. But in that case, I felt like the policy did accommodate the different forms of transportation in that particular area of my district. And where it didn't, it was really federal law. So the Americans with Disabilities Act had some certain requirements of sidewalks, so that individuals, particularly those who use mobility devices, would be included as well. And it wasn't our policy that brought those restrictions, but a federal law, which I think will allow a lot more people to use the corridor that we're talking about. So to me, it made sense. Today is September 8th, so it's a one-year anniversary of a very large storm event. And as we talk about investments in curb and gutter, to me, safety has to be at the top of the list when we do our priorities, that we really ought to look at where we need that infrastructure to keep our residents safe. So I think that is reflected in the policy, and I think that's something that's important to keep in there. Thank you.
Any other comments? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Brings us John Traheal. Have some exciting news for us, I believe.
Madam Chair, Item 12 is some very innovative approaches. And here from the Public Works Department and from City Manager's offices, Karen Peters, John Traheal, Ginger Spencer, and staff from Public Works, here to talk to you about the program.
Madam Chair, members of the Subcommittee, I'm very pleased to be here as we continue conversations and look at opportunities to further the council's goal of 40% waste diversion from our landfills by the year 2020. So I'm going to ask staff, they've done a terrific job, to talk a little bit about some things we're looking to do.
Thank you, Karen. And Madam Chair, members of the Subcommittee, I have today with me Ginger Spencer, Assistant Director, as well as Gretchen Wolf from the Community Economic Development Department. So with that, just as a reminder, as Karen mentioned, we do have this goal by 2020. And as we looked at this goal, we have found that there are several ways that we can do this. And we're looking at new programs. We're also looking at expanding and improving our education and communication. As we heard, sometimes it's difficult not knowing what to recycle, as well as what to do, as well as other resources that residents have with them. And so we're also looking at public-private partnerships as part of our initiatives to move forward to meet this 40% goal. And so with that, as you know, what we're trying to do is create the circular economy within the city of Phoenix, because most of our material, it's more of a linear economy where residents utilize materials that are mined from other places, and then it just gets thrown away and gets buried in a landfill. And that's something we're trying to change here in the city of Phoenix. We want to create an economy where the material gets used over and over and over again as much as possible. And then when it can't be used any further, that it could be used for other purposes rather than putting in a landfill, or even sending it to China. So that's what we're trying to do here with the city of Phoenix as part of our role here. So with that, I have Ginger Spencer and Gretchen Wolf that are going to talk to you about some exciting programs that we want to move forward with, based on a CFI and an RFP that we did earlier.
Thanks, John. Madam Chair and Subcommittee members, as John said, we're trying to build a circular economy here in Phoenix. And basically with that circular economy, we're trying to recover, reuse, and remanufacture our resources. So in an effort to do that, earlier this year, we issued the Transforming Trash RFP. And from that, we received eight responsive proposals. And we have been basically in negotiations with three of those, what we're calling successful bidders. And we're going to bring those contract amendments, or, excuse me, contract awards to you next month, in hopes of getting your approval, to recommend city council approval on those contracts. So the three that we're currently working on right now that we'll bring forward next month are carpeting and carpet foam, mattresses, and residential food waste. You may recall, these are what we fondly call, or Gretchen fondly calls, our problem children in the landfill. And that's because they are big and bulky items. They do not compost, that sort of thing. They're taking up a lot of room and a lot of space in our landfill. So we put out this RFP, and we did get some responsive proposals, and there's some exciting things happening there. You see Palm Franz is also on the list. When we originally put out the RFP, we did not receive any proposals on that. But due to some recent developments that Gretchen will talk about in just a moment, we are looking forward to move forward on a process with Palm Franz. In addition to the RFP, thank you. In addition to the RFP, we also issued a call for innovators. And this is basically a sexy way of saying RFI, Request for Information. But this is what we coined this term, and actually, it's getting a lot of national interest. Gretchen gets calls from other cities saying, "Can we issue a call for innovators?" And we're like, "Yes, you can." But we'll get through our process first. But this is another exciting process for us, where basically, we are taking our resources and taking our trash, excuse me, and transforming them into a resource. You may have heard John say "trash to treads," so that's what we're looking to do here in Phoenix. And so next month, we're going to come forward with nine additional RFPs that we would like to issue over the next year. But we're ready to move forward with two items today. So back in, I believe it was March, we came to you and talked about recycling. And recycling programs vary across the country. Even city to city, our programs are different. And we've heard from you loud and clear that our recycling messages are sometimes are inconsistent, or they're difficult. So in an effort to basically increase our recycling, we would like to go out and issue an RFP on community outreach and awareness. When we did our waste characterization study, what we found was 57,000 tons of recyclables are actually being thrown in the trash can every year. That's 114 million pounds. And basically, and you can see right there in that garbage can, there are, well, at the top, it's a cardboard box. That can be recycled. We want that to be recycled. So when you look at that 57,000 tons, and what it equates to each year, it is costing us about $4.5 million in lost revenue that could be coming to the city. It's costing us an additional $1 million to transport these materials to our landfill. And then also due to contamination, as you can see there, we've got items in the blue recycle bin that should not be there. That's costing us another $1 million in excess processing fees and contamination charges. So when we did our waste characterization study, what we found out was 21% of what we're finding in our blue containers and our recycling containers is actually contamination. So in all, what that is adding up to in lost revenue, as well as processing fees, is about $6.5 million annually. And we want to do something about that. And so by issuing this RFP for community outreach and awareness, what we believe it will allow us to better educate our residents, we'll be able to communicate better with them, we'll be able to simplify our message, and incentivize our residents. And in an effort to do what I like to say, recycle more and recycle right. So Gretchen's going to talk about the two RFP processes.
Thank you. Good morning. So for the Community Outreach and Awareness RFP, we're looking at a minimum qualification for the proposer's project manager to have at least five years of experience doing these type of community outreach programs in both English and Spanish. We want to be sure we're contracting with someone who has experienced, demonstrated experience connecting with communities like ours. And our evaluation criteria, as you see, will be looking at the qualifications and experience of that project manager, as well as the proposer, their approach to the scope of work, how they propose connecting with our community, and then their proposed fees. The timing on this, we'd like to issue this RFP as soon as possible, so that we can start redirecting that $6.5 million Ginger was talking about back into the economy. So now let's talk about Palm Franz. So palm trees, you can hardly look around Phoenix without seeing palm trees. They're beautiful. People associate them with our sunny climate, our desert oasis image. But palm trees, like a lot of people that live here, are not native to Arizona, and they're a huge challenge for our solid waste program. They don't compost well. And even though we included them in the Transforming Trash RFP, as Ginger mentioned, we did not get a responsive proposal for that category. But then, city manager did an interview with NPR. They talked about what we're doing to raise our diversion rate, what we're doing to create a circular economy here. And he mentioned Palm Franz is one of our problem children. And the reporter ended the story saying, "So if you have any great ideas about Palm Franz, let us know." And people did. So we heard from quite a few people, email, Twitter, all sorts of ways, with ideas for Palm Franz. Out of those, we have at least two that are viable business opportunities. There are two companies with market-ready processes for taking Palm Franz and manufacturing them into real goods.
I just like hiring the city manager as sales manager. Way to delegate up.
So for years and years, all we've done with Palm Franz is send them to the landfill. So it's not been a priority for us to measure them or count them. But if we're going to ask somebody to come and build a manufacturing plant here, we're going to need some solid numbers. So we're investigating ways, exploring ways that we can get those numbers, whether we need to have our waste characterization consultant help that, if we've got some in-house options there. But probably, we're somewhere around 8,000 tons annually, just from the visual audits that we've done in the past. So we're still in the early planning stages for this RFP, but we would expect the minimum calls to require the proposer to have demonstrated experience doing something with Palm Franz. There clearly is a market for this, and there's clearly folks who are out there doing this. So we should go with one of the companies that have a track record. And then we would expect the evaluation criteria to look at qualifications, experience, as well as their business plan, how are they going to market whatever it is they're creating from Palm Franz, the financial return and the benefits to the city, as well as the proposed technology that they would be bringing to Phoenix. So moving forward with this Palm Franz RFP, actually has three benefits. It increases our diversion rate. It eliminates the cost of driving those Palm Franz from the transfer stations to the landfill, and then it creates new economic activity here in Phoenix.
So with that, Madam Chair, members of the Subcommittee, the next steps, what we have before you today is, we will be preparing to issue these two RFPs for Community Outreach and Awareness Services, as well as Palm Franz. And then also in October, we will be returning back to Subcommittee for nine additional solicitations based on the CFI responses that we received, as well as recommendation for Transforming Trash RFP for the three items that Ginger mentioned earlier. With that, any questions?
Thank you very much. Some questions about the Community Outreach and Awareness RFP. What is the scope of work? Will it include all types of our diversion programs, just focus on recycling?
Madam Chair, members of the Subcommittee, Councilwoman Gago, this communication outreach will be based on all parts of our program, whether it's our green organist curbside program, recycling program. It could include, you know, composting at home, just a number of things. We're trying to make it very broad, so it encompasses all parts of our program, as well as specific information on recycling. We want to be able to inspire and incentivize our residents, as Ginger mentioned, to recycle more and recycle right. But as well as to figure out ways to avert from the material that we're picking up to begin with, because that's the most important part of the program, is reducing and reusing. And so we're trying to find companies that have done this, that have worked well in other cities, and that have incentivized residents to do this.
Wonderful. That's very exciting, because there's definitely still some confusion out there about what is recyclable and where. And even if we can't get everything in one RFP, it would be great if we still do more awareness around, like Bag Central. And I don't know that that would necessarily be in this RFP, but we have a diverse number of programs out there, and people ought to be aware of what goes where. A lot of people are not yet aware, I think, of our green organics option. And we also hear from folks that on food waste side, people don't know that they have options as well. So a lot of education will be...
And Madam Chair, Councilwoman Gago, also to mention that this RFP, this communication could include one or more proposers that we could accept. So there could be, you know, two, three, four proposals that have great ideas on different parts of components of our program. And so we, depends on the outcome of this, we could include more than one related to this communication RFP process.
I think that's wonderful, that that's something we're open to, because by far, residential recycling, I think, is the biggest and key to our success. And that, we really do want to incentivize people to participate and help us reduce those big numbers that you mentioned earlier about the cost to the city. But at the same time, we often talk at the Subcommittee about working with landscapers and others, and they might need a different set of tools and programs than the average residential, where we need something that we can really reach out across the city and have high level of reach. So thank you for considering both of those.
I want to thank you, John and Ginger. You have taken some ideas, and you are just pursuing them with great enthusiasm, and you have whipped people into a like mind. And the creativity, I think you've got to be a leader in this nation, and I'm very excited about the possibilities. So congratulations on moving this quickly, and for being so creative. Thank you. We look forward to hearing from you next month and getting the RFPs out so we can get going.
Thank you.
I have one question.
Oh, wait, one question, sorry.
Yes. It's regarding both RFPs. The first one says, "Project manager with at least five years of experience." And then the second one says, "Demonstrated experience." How many years of demonstrated experience will we want with the Palm Franz?
Now, Madam Chair, Councilwoman Pastore, as it relates to the communication and education, there's been companies that's been doing this for a long time. So that's why we wanted to make sure that five years was the minimum. Now, when it relates to Palm Franz, that's kind of an emerging technology, emerging program that not a lot, there's not a whole lot of experience out there, and there's not a lot of stuff going on as relating to that field. So we wanted to make sure that we opened it up a little more, because there's some great ideas out there, but they haven't been out there very long. So we just wanted to be careful that we didn't disincentivize or leave people out that might have great ideas. So that's why it's a little different on the Palm Franz discussion as it relates to minimum qualifications.
So like a year wouldn't be able to demonstrate a year, or is it just too new that really there isn't anybody that has any type of experience? I mean, they have experience, but not metric experience.
Right.
Councilwoman Pastore, the two companies that I spoke to directly after the NPR interview are both very young companies. They probably have between one to two years' experience. But the exciting thing about those companies is that they have contracts for their products. So as we go forward and formulate this RFP, we want to have the flexibility on the front end to include them and still evaluate based on the overall proposal.
Okay. I mean, it's basically how I'm hearing it or interpreting it. These are startup companies that are fairly young, and they're still in the innovative process. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, oh, sorry. Once again, Councilwoman Pastore made me think of another question, such comment. I think for experience on, speaking out to all of our residential customers, that experience is essential. But on some of the more emerging markets, to me, on food waste and maybe Bag Central, there may not be a huge pool out there with a lot of experience. And so to me, on that side, I would be comfortable with some flexibility if that could get us innovation. Obviously, mass market, you do need that experience. But we are, you are doing so many innovative things that I don't know if experience is possible.
And Madam Chair, Councilwoman Gago, that's correct. And we can readjust as it relates to communication and education. Because I would just, in discussion with some MIT students that have this great program on, as it relates to food waste, that has this great app that allows businesses that can find ways to reduce their food waste by finding people that need it. And they got this great program, but it's only been in place for probably a year. But it's a great program. They've gotten great reviews, and so... They've gotten great reviews, and so there's a good example of something that we might need to be flexible with as part of our program.
Wonderful.
And Madam Chair and Councilmembers, to add to what John said, that's why we wanted to bring this forward as a part of information and discussion to get your input, and so we can definitely go back and look at readjusting the minimum qualifications for the year's experience.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next is call to the public, Cynthia Malecki.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Councilmembers, for letting me come here to express my concern about the issue regarding the streetlight replacements. LED is good. LED is cost-effective. And I really appreciate the work of the city staff. I will be contacting them in the future. I have the business card. But I want to point out several things. One, new information is occurring almost monthly, and we're talking about Kelvins. We're still going to be using 4,000 Kelvins, even though they are being tested in South Phoenix, in an area that is not easy to get to from North Phoenix, but we will be there. Also, they say that the 4,000 Kelvins is what's recommended by IDA, which is International Dark Sky Association, based in Tucson. They're not recommending 4,000 Kelvins anymore. And I'm also concerned about what is the definition of a residential street? 35th Avenue is right behind my bedroom. It used to be a horse trail when I first moved here. And now I'm probably going to have light rail, which I'm kind of looking forward to. But having a white light in my bedroom window is not conducive to health. Excuse me. This is the first time I ever did a presentation.
We don't bite. We just...
And I know you guys...
I know.
...at Councilman Gates. Anyway, white lights do not add anything aesthetically to neighborhoods, especially if it's your neighborhood. I'm thinking of historic Willow District. They have jet planes, and now they're going to have glaring white streetlights. There's no scientific research that white or white-blue lights have an impact on public safety. In fact, sometimes the numbers can go up. And I am glad that it is noted in one of the emails that I received that there is ongoing research on the effect of health on humans, wildlife, and plants. After all, we're talking about a circadian rhythm. If the light that you're using is like the sun at noon, it's going to break up that rhythm. And there's lots of things in wildlife that we don't even think of. And I know this sounds silly, but just like moths, well, they're the prey for other animals that form our urban environment. So I'm going to say that LED lights are cost-effective. But let's do it right the first time. Right now, there's a movement to change all through Europe, all through the nation, and already Berlin, Brooklyn, Davis, California, there's such an uproar that they're changing out those LED lights for the soft yellow lights. So yes, LED is good, but let's make it worth our while. Let's go to yellow, not white.
Thank you. And could we have staff do a report on this and get back to us? Because I know we've sent some information that she's given to us before, and I haven't seen a copy of the response, because I think there are some legitimate questions.
Well, I got an email last week in my office.
Oh, did you? Okay.
But Ray's been talking to me.
Pardon me?
Ray?
Right there.
Already on top of it.
Good. Thank you very much.
But also, it's really dark sky, because I'm just...
Right.
...community, I'm not in any way, shape, or form, someone who really understands the whole different spectrum of lights. Absolutely white-blue and weird gray. White-blue is out. That's the color that comes out of the TV that keeps your kids up.
Oh, yep.
But they're finding out through research that the lower the light, the better it is aesthetically. And again, it does not scientifically impact crime rate.
Okay. Thank you. That's the, all the cards. Do I have any requests for future agenda items?
Lighting.
Besides lighting? I think we don't have a list today, but we're taking on some pretty good challenges in water and, oh, we do? I just didn't go far enough. Yeah, we have a pretty good list going. I know we have a lot of infrastructure needs and critical, we're kind of at a critical point on many of these areas, whether it's drainage, it's water, I mean, there's so many, and I'm more than willing to take on the tough ones, so I'm dragging all of you along with me. So if you have any questions or comments, or something you think that we're not covering, just let us know. We'll make sure we incorporate them. Thank you.
Madam Chair, later this afternoon at the policy meeting, we'll be talking about Transportation 2050 and the next steps with that. But as that proceeds along, that will be a frequent item at this Subcommittee as well. So you'll see updates as we go with the implementation of transit or streets items on the list as well.
Thank you very much. Hearing voices or have any more cards? We are adjourned.